Good evening, welcome to Loma Country Township Budget Meeting of October 12th. Please join me for pledge to the flag.
Pledge to the leaders, to the flag, the United States of America, the good republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, I just want to start by saying a big thank you to Bruce for this preamble, which I found personally very helpful, and I believe Mr. Shoemaker also, Commissioner Shoemaker also, expressed the same gratitude for this information, extremely helpful. That being said, I'll hand it off to you, Mr. Manager.
All right, gentlemen, before you, you've received a budget packet and it included that introductory message from the manager, what we'd like to do tonight, and without all of the board here, we've kind of adjusted the presentation component of, of the, of the budget, just so we can have a general overview. I'd like to go about an hour, hour and a half, unless you'd like to go a little longer when we get to a topic. Please feel free, if there's questions or concerns as we work through it, we can make some adjustments and some notes and get feedback, so like to just keep it really light. If you have a question, grab me before we get too far. Appreciate the staff and all their hard work and efforts towards the budget. We do have several staff members in attendance. We may get to some topics that are in other departments. So if there's questions for that staff, we'll make sure we follow up and when they're here Monday, they can give some additional information, so. What we do, the feedback, we work back through the budget, we'll meet up and either try to implement some recommended changes or have an update on any questions, so. Also, I would note, since it's fairly early, it's only October, a lot of our budget estimates, we continue to monitor for the end of the year, to include those spending items, as well as any quotes for materials or supplies. We have our best at this point, because this draft budget really came out with September numbers. We have our best efforts moving forward with, with where we are, so with that, I'd always put that disclaimer out there. Things may change by November, but we'll keep everybody updated on where it is. I'm going to take one minute and go over and move the middle of the thing in front of the screen share. All right. Oh, you're good, right there, thank you. Hopefully my slideshow mouse is going to work. Probably not, it worked earlier. Can you give me, where? You just give me, right or left there? Since you're sitting by the computer? Give me, give me right arrow. Yeah. No, no, not up there, just right arrow on the keypad. There you go. Right arrow. Top mouse.
I hit the right arrow on the. I'm Renee tonight.
You're, you're Renee tonight. All right, so what we'd like to talk about this evening and the schedule for this meeting, just kind of a general overview of budgets, as you'll see. Stan, you're killing me. We'll, we'll look at the now defunct American Rescue Plan budget, debt service fund, open space, liquid fuels, and then we'll start into the general fund, roads, parks, facilities, we have recreation prepared and community economic development as well, if we get that far. Like I said, please stop me if you have questions, but that's where we'll, we'll kind of go. So I like to start with an overview of the budget in the book, both for the board and the residents. And you'll see what we've provided, the general fund, which is always, as we refer to it, the O1 Fund, 12 million, 708,000 revenues, 12 million, 408,000 expenditures. We're a difference, I'm sorry, it's reversed, but we're a difference of negative $299,000. We're going to need fund balance to balance that budget. The solid waste fund, which will be a new fund that we'll review extensively, that is for trash collection, yard waste and the recycling component. This was always separated from the general fund, the O1 Fund. It was placed back into, or it was taken out of its own separate fund. It was put in the general fund and we're looking to bring that back with, as you see here, the substantial amount that we believe solid waste is going to cost residents in the township. I felt it was better to have that segregation so that you can see that moving forward. I thought with, you know, a third of the, having that be a third to, you know, 40% of the, the general fund, it would be a little deceiving. So we anticipate the 4,784,000 in revenues and expenditures. It is, we believe, going to include a 60% rate increase for that last four month period of 2024. We think that the trash bill eventually will go from 360 to about $576. That's conservative number, we continue to watch our peers and see what we get in feedback of that. The interesting part, and we'll talk more about this, but when we, when we hit the solid waste fund budget, I like to continue to review where we are so that the public can continue to hear at multiple meetings. This is increases that we're seeing across the market, our, our peers in South Whitehall just saw a 60% increase over a five-year contract. Our contract does expire in August, the end of August of 2024. However, there is a potential that waste management may execute an additional one-year contract provision that they are allowed to do. So something to be mindful of, solid waste fund is new and we are unsure of the rate increase potential, but we, when we look at that budget, we, in finance and Jeff actually kind of broke down all the components of how that fee is going to be derived, so. The sewer fund, O8 Fund, as we call it, 5,407,600 in revenue and expenditures. This does, this proposed budget does include a 5% rate increase. That rate increase is in line with our former PFM rate study that covered over a 10-year period. The debt service fund, Fund 19, 2,114,200 in revenue and expenditures. You'll see, and it's a quick slide again, just to reiterate, the, that capital budget dollars and open space fund dollars are put in there to pay back our, our long-term debt. Capital projects fund, the 30 Fund budget, 2,980,000 in revenue. As we've budgeted, 4,105,255 in expenditures, a difference of negative 1,125, or 25,255. That's fund balance required to make that budget balance. The federal entitlement fund, as we said, we'll look at in two slides, that's eliminated in 2024. The open space fund, 2,050,000 in revenue and expenditures. Liquid fuels, 977,150 in revenue, 1,177,150 in expenditures. That difference of negative 200,000 will require fund balance from the liquid fuels fund. So we'll jump right into the funds, this is the easiest one because it no longer exists, but thought it would be good for the public to hear about the fund as well as the board. So Fund 32, you may or may not remember, was created as part of the American Rescue Plan funding. That was funded from the federal government, half the monies came in '21, the other half came in 2022. All the monies needed to be encumbered by 2026. And the big component of this was up to $10 million of these proceeds could be spent for revenue loss, so. If you could form a stand, that funding was, that fund was eliminated basically for '24. As in '23, you may or may not remember, the board did authorize the transfer of the, like, 1,015,000 to the general fund to replace monies that were sent to the capital budget in 2023. And then the remainder of those dollars, the 2 million and change, were brought over to the capital projects fund. So out of the 3,400,000 and change, that's how the breakup happened with those dollars, so. Any questions about why we don't have the fund anymore or how those monies got divvied up? Good? The other kind of in and out fund here, debt service fund. When you float and issue debt, it's necessary as part of those bond ordinances that you establish a debt service fund. So the township currently has two, two series of banknotes. They do cover, as we'll see further on, but one is for open space. The other is for the community center slash land preservation of some previous land. And then basically, it doesn't generate any revenue, however, we transfer money from the capital fund and the open space fund as those are the associated areas where that payment of those bills come from. And you'll see that the capital budget transfer is 329,000. The open space fund transfer is 1,785,200. So basically, what we're going to pay back in debt is 2,113,700. The debt principal, 2,022,000, and the interest, 92,200. As we said, what's that debt for? The '21 finance, we had reissued that debt from a 2017 financing. And that was the 7 million Weiner plus community center. So the new debt that occurred in 2022 was for the open space fund. And the township was able to preserve Dorney Track with that amount. It was necessary that we floated a, a banknote for that 6,142,000 debt issuance. I think it's always interesting to note, we want to make sure the board's aware and understands, we've broken out the funding from both accounts for these obligations. And we did it over the period of five years when we would anticipate the earned income tax for open space to be in effect. We will have to look at and get the voters to reaffirm the open space earned income tax after that five-year period. So we thought, when we originally set this up a few years ago, that it would be fiscally prudent to only share part of the debt, which was the open space for Weiner of that, of that issuance. So that's why you see the '23 to '26 period in there and why it's half. When we ran the calculations, that, you know, two sevenths of debt worked out to be where those open space fund contributions, that, that financial number where that, where they were appropriate. I would note, and this is the concerning part, after 2026, the last four years of that note, that's 731,000, reverts all back to the capital fund. And the capital fund only brings in about 1.3 million in property tax. So over 50% of the capital fund dollars in 2027 need to be directed back towards debt repayment. So that spending and projects and long-term, when we, we look at those long-term components, we need to be mindful of that issue. So the 2022 series, as we said, that is the open space. And you'll see what that accounts to for just open space, about 1.3 million. Spread out over that five-year, five-year period. And with that, like we said, established in 2022, that was part of the, oh, so anything on debt service before we go into open space fund? Everybody understand how the, the debt flows in and flows out and what we look like for the next six years? All right. Any questions with how it's broken down to open space fund or capital budget? So we'll move on, open space fund, 33. As we said, this was established to segregate those dollars that we received from the earned income tax for open space that was passed by voter referendum. We estimate that to generate about 2,500,000 for next year. And the purpose of that fund is to pay for debt related to acquisition of open space, basically purchasing open space. You can use components of that, and the law did change, 25% of the annual towards maintenance of open space and 25% towards improvements. So you could technically improve parks by putting something on them, a trail, place that, things of that nature. So our estimated collection for this year is about 2 million, we are trending that. So you're really seeing, there's not a lot of additional revenue we expect in that fund. So we think, we're pretty comfortable with that, 2,500,000. What do we do with that fund? It's fairly simple. As we said before about the debt service fund, 1,785,000 of that, 2,500,000 is going to the debt service fund to pay those long-term debts as we just, as we just saw. So you'll ask what, what happens to the other 264,000 and change that we didn't spend? That is there to increase fund balance. We anticipate at the end of the entire, well, at least that component of '24, we should be around 1.4 million in fund balance. I think that's important to note as we look to engage in open space. If open space becomes available, we'll have the potential opportunity then to have some, some money in the bank. Also, if the board chooses to consider various improvements to open space, I think it's important that you know that those dollars are there. When we run a quick, quick estimate on that open space fund over its life, we should see about probably 2 million total in that, that overall fund balance. So if we collect, you know, the 2,500,000 for the next several years till the tax is up, you know, plus the fund balance we currently have, you're looking at that, that kind of balance. So there is opportunity there for, like I said, additional land purchases, which, you know, I think was a lot of the intent of, of the voters and the establishment of the fund. Any questions about open space fund, where we are with those, those dollars?
Yeah, one question, so that, that 225% for maintenance and of open space and, and improvements. Like, do you, is your plan to use it for that?
So I didn't have it in this year at this point, just wanted to put that topic out there as, to get some feedback of is, and there was some discussion at a previous board meeting, you know, is the main focus of the board and the policy to only engage in land at this point? Or would you like us at some point to start to use some of those dollars for open space improvement or maintenance? And that's, that's going to be helpful feedback that the board can, can provide, you know?
Even if we do use it, we'll still have 50% in the future for purchase.
Correct, but I would, I would be mindful that, that, that 50%, remember you have those, that financing term there, so you're only going to net about 300,000 each, each year. So, you know, what are we, like, three years left? You're going to have about 900,000 in there, 50% of that would be like 4, 450, that would be remaining. And I would say, actually, you could use all of those dollars because it's 50% of the annual, so you could spend up to a million dollars on maintenance or improvements, however, more than half goes to our debt service. So, yeah, you, you could account for maybe, you know, 900 in there. If, if you didn't, if you didn't have the, if you didn't have that component of debt, you would, you would look at about a million dollars. So if, if the voters would reaffirm the tax, moving forward at that tax rate, our financing technically would roll off by the end of '26, so in '27, you would collect 2 million. You could use a million of those, of those proceeds to make improvements. Important to note. Anything else? Good? We'll move on to liquid fuels fund, so liquid fuels fund is, as we're all aware, is based on various, various items, it's provided by the state. It has to do with part of your road-based miles plus your population or the census. There is an act, I listed all the texts there if people are interested. There's a funding schedule by percent and there's an oil company franchise tax. So with some additional revenues per various other acts to get this pool of money from the state. So they do go to the townships based on that formula, available dollars, our most current census. I have to look and see if they went to the 2020 yet, they may have. It doesn't get us a lot of additional monies, but we'll see, and eventually it will do that. That recognized road miles, so there is a list of roads that the township provides. If you have an updated list and you add additional roadways by September, it goes towards your allocation factor. So we don't have any this year to, to add in there, it's very minimal though. I think offhand, it's like $2,000 a road mile, so it's helpful, but not, not extremely helpful. So we continue to update our maps and make sure we're, where we are. It's important to note, maybe too, when you look at roads, the way roads are dedicated to the township, right? They have to meet certain parameters that include like length, they have to have a cul-de-sac at the end, all of those things where the township has roads we've adopted years ago. There, if you look at some of them, they are, they are too short to be liquid fuels qualified. So you see our 125.26 miles, we have more roadway than that. It just doesn't meet the PennDOT minimum standard. So when the board looks to adopt roads or looks at plans, we would want to make sure that, you know, they are meeting that basic minimum, so we can increase our road-based mileage and factor that into the calculation. So what did we do with that money in 2023? We completed our micro-surfacing project, our ultra-thin and our crack sealing, line painted just got completed. So wait and see the invoice to update that number, but that's where the money went on this side of it. And those are the things we were able to do. We look at the revenues, interestingly enough, definitely during COVID, we saw some revenues start to drop. They are continuing to be down from that 2019 high of 1,290,000. So we are provided an estimate, this 972,150, we believe it'll be a little bit higher. Usually the estimate's low from the state, but it's interesting to kind of trend out where those things are headed. Also important to note, as more people go to EVs and they're not buying fuel, I know the state is trying to address how that funding gap is eventually going to be looked at. So something to be mindful of, while it's good for the environment, a lot of our funding to, for these projects that you just saw comes from that fuel tax, so. What's going to be our revenue in that fund? It's pretty simple and basic, we think we'll get a little bit of interest, probably about 500,000. That 972,150 from the state, we'll need to use 200,000 in fund balance or reserve prior year. Fund balance, prior year revenue, as you see in your, your budget book, for a total of 1,177,150. We believe we're, we're going to start the fund, or we started at 855,778 for the year. You'll see some trending from where we came from. What are we going to spend our, our money, our dollars on and how are we going to direct them? So one of the main things we do out of there is winter maintenance or salt and anti-skid. I would call the board's attention to the increase in that number as we're seeing some, of course, pricing increases from the salt suppliers on that per tonnage base. So we're up several thousand dollars. Road projects, we'll look at those a little bit in detail. Capital projects, we have no vehicles in for the year for that total. And you'll see how that, that fund balance continues to trend out. You know, we started 997, 2022, we started a little over 2 million. So we've been spending down the fund balance that's in that account. One of those projects in depth on the road resurfacing, you'll see micro-service and ultra-thin, 635,000, that is an increase from our 2023 numbers. We moved line painting and crack sealing, which we had put in here upon my arrival. We actually shifted them to liquid fuels, I think it's better to put them back to the general fund. So you'll see that highlighted in the general fund budget review. Sauerkraut Lane Extension paving and Mall Fair paving, we'll see where we are with Sauerkraut Extension. We're going to have to pave from Spring Creek to Quarry, plus the Compost Center roadway. We think that's going to be in the spring and that's going to be the driver of all of the rest of the roads resurfacing projects. We'll like to aggressively be out with some numbers. However, I'm concerned that our numbers for Sauerkraut Lane need to be accurate, so. Might be additional paving, might be a reduction in those other two, but interesting to note, the overall road resurfacing is, is 987,000 worth of budgeting. It was 956 in 2023. As you'll see in the capital budget, when we look, get to it eventually, usually we have a fog seal number of that 250,000 for the fog seal. With as tight as the capital budget is, we're going to have to rely on just the micro-service, ultra-thin and the general paving this year. So I would note as well, and we'll note it again in the capital side, the pavement program that we saw from CKS said that we should be in the area of about 1.3 to 1.4 million dollars to make sure that we're keeping up to where we need to be with roads, so we don't fall behind. And you'll notice this number is definitely significantly lower than what that project and where we should be shows. So just want everybody to be mindful of that. We don't want to get too far behind on roads. Any questions on the liquid fuels component?
I got one question, the, the salt, our salt supply, I thought we were in good shape because of low use last year. We were even helping neighboring municipalities last year because we had an excess of salt.
Probably two years ago.
Was it?
Last year, actually, three years.
Last year, we didn't use a lot. It was a mild year, but off a year, was it a mild winter last?
For the past four years, it was mild, we used a lot of salt before that. But when we, we are in two basic consortiums, we get half, some of our salt through Co-Stars, which when you put numbers in, you're required to get 60% of your tonnage. So basically, we, you know, a certain year, every year, we're allowed a certain amount of tonnage we request and we have to get at least 60% of that qualified for Co-Stars. And we're also part of a local consortium for a second supplier of salt, which basically it's the same thing, we have to be near that number within 60, about 60% of of what we basically put out for bid that year. So, I mean, we could get a oh, what we basically put out for bid that year. So, I mean, we could get a lesser amount of salt, but we have to get a minimum of sixty percent of our capacity just basically for our contracts and satisfy our contracts.
So what are we sitting on?
How many tons?
Approximately. Uh, how much salt are we sitting on now? Approximately? And, and what do we use in a, in a mi- uh, medium winter? Approximately?
Father, man, I was close though.
Right.
For that sixty percent. Well, if it never snowed. We still have to buy the sixty percent.
Right. Yeah. What about forty percent?
So last year we did nothing but salt. Year before. You don't know what's.
I, I, I was doing a little prep, just to know, hey, this, this must be a misprint and finish. Tell me if it is. To continue to receive liquid funds, a road must be maintained in such a condition that it can be driven safely at fifteen miles. That, that must be a miss.
No, it's ba- it's basically you can have and I'll let Dennis answer too. Basically it has to be, uh, free of, uh, free and clear, and it can be even a, uh, it could technically be a dirt road and it can be a gravel road, but it has to be, I, I am sorry, it can't be dirt. It has to be gravel or an aggregate to be qualified, right?
Technically.
No, no, I mean, for a road to qualify for, it says it only has to be safely travelable for fifteen miles.
Yeah.
That's my point. You made it. Our roads are in good shape. They're, they're in better shape than the state. There you go. You. Thank you.
The only thing I, I'd like to say. Or they haven't figured out what to do. Liquid fuels. The electric vehicle. If you're funded by the purchase of that, the gas vehicles come back and back. Where's the difference coming in? We're used to a high dollar.
Well, he mentioned, you mentioned the drop this year. Drop was what?
Yeah, but a little over like point oh two percent. Yeah.
Drop very little for the one we're talking about. In the future, I hear.
I'm just looking down.
What? And, and the other, and the other component of that too is I think a lot of these things, when you look and you have to be mindful of, if you have an economic downturn where, you know, there's less people driving or less deliveries or less product moving. Now hopefully that probably won't affect us as much in this state with all logistics, but, but that's another component of that. If people are buying less fuel, you know, as we saw during, during the pandemic. Good, Stan. All right. So let's, let's get into the, uh, we'll get into the general fund here. So the O one fund, uh, as we said earlier, uh, one of the big things to note, uh, is there, there's a, a decrease in the spending plan. So we were around, you know, fifteen million dollars, uh, in previous years. Uh, and the interesting part, as we've removed that sanitation, you'll see, uh, it looks like we have less of a budget. Uh, however, it's from shifting those, those garbage bills and whatnot, uh, another direction. So I want everybody to be mindful that it's not like we're, uh, you know, drastically changing things here. It's just in a different presentation. So, uh, the general funds for our residents, uh, is not supported by property tax. Property tax only goes to the capital budget. So, uh, as we'll see how the general fund's made up, uh, your property tax dollars don't fund this side of it. So what comes out of the general fund, uh, people may ask. So public works, recreation, community development, uh, those various departments, admin, financial admin, those, uh, those various departments of the township. Where do we get our revenue, right? If it's not from property tax, uh, how's it funded? So we do receive property tax for the library, um, and that is just passed straight through. So you'll notice in your book, four, five, six, five hundred. That was a voter approved, uh, referendum to fund the library. Uh, we collect those dollars and we pass them, uh, straight to the library, uh, as, after we take out, uh, the administration for the tax collector, uh, costs. So what you call a local, uh, enabling tax act, uh, you'll see real estate transfer and income, local service. Real estate transfer tax, we kept that flat at nine hundred and twenty five thousand. Uh, important to note on this item as well, it's linked directly to the economy and with what we're seeing, uh, in the economy and mortgage rates. Uh, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to catch this number. Uh, I would tell the board, uh, at this point for the year, we're going to hit and exceed the nine twenty five that we budgeted this year. However, we saw a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar, uh, transfer tax month mainly, uh, from the transfer of a warehouse. So that's a one time type, uh, event. We're seeing anywhere from, you know, fifty five to eighty thousand dollars a month. Uh, our last month in September was like fifty seven thousand and change, one of our lowest, uh, transfers in September, uh, in the last probably four years. I think fifty three thousand in eighteen or seventeen was our lowest in September. Uh, uh, it seems that this is something we really need to be, uh, keep an eye on. I think the market's going to continue to, what we're seeing slow down. Uh, we're seeing it internally with sewer lateral inspections, uh, requests for certs, for sewer certs. It's, it's very, uh, this one's very difficult to predict as we might have those one time land transfers, uh, that may occur that boost that up. Uh, and without those, as we start to see these large lots dwindle, I mean, you really only have, uh, you know, merch town, you've got top golf, you've got areas, uh, throughout the township, but it's not what it once was. So. Earned income tax, uh, we increased the budget there, uh, approximately four hundred and thirty thousand from, uh, the twenty twenty three collection. We had budgeted six million, six hundred and seventy thousand. Uh, we think we'll, we'll be around seven million collection for the year. We have budgeted, uh, seven million, one hundred for twenty twenty four. Uh, I would caution the board as well, once again on this one. Uh, usually, uh, I have a fairly, we're a fairly conservative number, uh, where we make up some of the, uh, differences and accumulate some fund balance, uh, with earned income tax. Uh, that number's fairly lean now. It's less conservative. Uh, there won't be as much, uh, as much play potentially in there. We think we're isolated for, for people and their employment and, uh, earned income. However, uh, I don't see, think we'll see, uh, a substantial windfall. If we hit seven million, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand for twenty twenty four collection, I, I think that's where the line is. So. Local service tax, local service tax is, uh, the fifty two dollars you pay if you, uh, work in the township. And that's for those emergency services and roads type of, uh, funding streams. Uh, we bumped that number up from, uh, six thirty five to six seventy five. We think we'll be around eight hundred and twenty thousand for this year on a collection. Always, uh, like I said, try to be conservative on that as well in case, uh, we start to see, uh, certain businesses in the township close down or, uh, you know, don't retain as many workers. So. Business license and permit, that section, uh, you'll see in there, the cable franchise fee. Uh, we continue to, uh, forecast a reduction in these. Uh, you'll see at one time in, in two thousand and eighteen, they were over five hundred thousand. Uh, we think we're trending to around four fifty as people look to cut cable. Um, that also cuts franchise fees that we, uh, we look at. So, uh, the franchise agreement, uh, continues to be negotiated, uh, with Service Electric and RCN. Uh, we believe that may, uh, be ready for the board's approval in early February. Uh, but we'll keep everybody posted. That shouldn't change these numbers. Uh, it does allow for some additional, uh, items per the law to, uh, fall under the, the programming part for this recalculation. So it might pick up somewhat. Uh, you'll notice, uh, we did, it looks like we're trending higher, uh, or we did last year. We had, uh, audits that were performed by the company that's working on our agreement that found that we had received some underpayment, uh, throughout the years. So we, we were made whole. Fines, that's what we get for general code, uh, fines plus, uh, false alarm billings for the fire department. Uh, interest. So this is a big component for us this year. You'll notice that, uh, six hundred thousand, we're going to anticipate. Why it's important, we, uh, have an adequate fund balance. Uh, we think we'll be around, you know, at least five to six percent range on investments. We're seeing, uh, between Jeff and Donna, they're proactively managing, uh, where we are and how we're invested. We're, we're very diverse, uh, as far as banks, uh, pligot and various, uh, short-term, uh, funding opportunities. So, uh, we'll continue to, to see where that takes us. Uh, rents, uh, you'll see that one up a little bit, but that's because of the new farming agreement, uh, a lot of substantial amount. Uh, state grants, uh, you'll notice in this line item, you know, fire relief. This used to be made up of, uh, fire leaf money plus the, uh, state recycling performance grant. So you would have been in the area of, you know, about three hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and seventy thousand. Uh, now a hundred thousand, which is that performance grant, uh, money for recycling is going to get moved to the solid waste fund. So see a little decrease there and that's why. Uh, state share revenue, we get pension aid, uh, based on number of employees, uh, and a state pension calculation. Uh, and the PERTA, which is, uh, public utility, uh, what they have to pay, uh, for not paying taxes. Their whole land value is, uh, figured in the township receives a payment. Charges for service for developer, uh, we'll call this out again in the community development budget. Uh, we added, uh, some line items there, uh, plan recording fee. So, uh, we do charge per the fee schedule to have, uh, our staff go and record someone's plan at the courthouse. Uh, and you'll notice the zoning hearing board application fees, uh, we added that component. They used to be included in the zoning permit, uh, application under the charges for service, uh, on that side. So, uh, we basically created a, a line item there to kind of segregate that and we can, uh, keep our eye on what that actually, what we receive for those applications, what we spend. Uh, charges for services, safety, uh, this is the big one. Uh, we anticipate, uh, approximately a hundred and thirty thousand less, uh, basically due to building permits. Talk about that more later. Um, and we'll continue to watch that market. Culture and recreation. So that's programming, swimming pool. Good, thank you. Uh, reimbursements and other, those are very, uh, it's a very small category. About thirty thousand. Special assessments, the streetlight tax, uh, so individuals are charged a tax for the streetlight service, about three hundred thousand. Uh, and then as we said, we'll have to use, um, at this point, about two hundred and ninety nine thousand in, uh, prior year reserves or fund balance. Fortunately, Rory's not here as he loves the, uh, loves the small type on this graphic, um, and the small TV. I know it's hard to read, but I always think that it puts, uh, interesting perspective on to seeing a, a color kind of, uh, blowout of where we receive our money and you, that big, uh, that big component, that earned income tax, that's seven million, one hundred thousand. It shows how important, um, our funding is for things that are reliant on the economy, right? And, and people's employment status here. So, uh, real estate transfer, of course, a, another big one. Uh, property tax in the, the streetlight district, uh, recreation and building permits at five, five hundred and seventy seven thousand. There is definitely, uh, market-driven factors here. So what do we spend our money on? Uh, we'll look at some of the categories a little more in depth, but, uh, once again, I think the picture always speaks to where we are. Um, employee benefits, uh, one of the largest chunks here, uh, public works, uh, one point eight million. Uh, the, the finance and admin secretary, uh, township manager, area eight seventy five. Buildings and facilities, eight hundred, public safety, uh, eight forty three. Uh, recreation, another larger one, a million dollars, just over that, uh, and parks, about one point two million. So pretty, uh, evenly distributed when you look at it, um, except for the grants we provide to organizations. You know, engineering, legal, those are all kind of tiny. So. Good.
Yeah, engineering.
I do. I'm going to have to move it typo. Uh, so then we want to talk about departments. We'll, we'll jump into the, the street department and we'll talk about parks. Always like to do an overview of where we are. So, uh, street department, we got public works director, uh, full-time administrative assistant. We have a full-time streets crew chief and, uh, ten street staff. That includes our mechanics. We have part-time recycling facility tenants. I would note that those, uh, are, will be represented in the, uh, solid waste sanitation budget. However, they follow under, fall under the purview of the, uh, director of, of public works. What do we do in, in twenty twenty three? Uh, continue to do some various stormwater repairs. Uh, we're working on basins. Uh, we're working on the Lower McConaughey Road Basin, you may notice next to, uh, next to Smooth On, uh, parking lot, uh, also several basins along the, uh, Route two twenty two bypass. Uh, we continue to, uh, explore other, uh, areas and maintenance opportunities to both replace, uh, actual physical structures in those, those units as well as cut grass, uh, and keep them free of debris. Uh, worked on our annual road resurfacing projects, that crack ceiling, line painting, uh, all the resurfacing as we talked about in the liquid fuels budget. We continue to work on our draft bridge maintenance and, uh, replacement plan, uh, as you'll see in the capital budget, uh, recommended we continue moving forward with that. Uh, as I said, the line painting, the crack ceiling, uh, and we've recently updated our curve analysis report, uh, that was done several years ago. Uh, it was necessary with, uh, some of the changes to roadways that we have that, uh, you'll notice there is a line item for signage, street signage. That project, uh, to get the signs posted is why that number's, uh, been slightly higher the last couple of years, but. What are we going to do in twenty twenty four? Uh, as we said, the road paving and resurfacing, that's, that's the big one. Uh, replace gun, gun club road bridge. That is a priority bridge. Uh, it's in, uh, permitting. Right now it's out of design and in permitting with the state. Uh, hopefully we'll have some kind of answer in the near future. Uh, Chestnut Street Culvert, as we explained to the board several months ago, coming out of the borough, uh, up Chestnut Street, there is a, a, uh, concrete walled, uh, culvert. Uh, it is a priority item for us as the concrete is now, uh, separating from the pipe, uh, and leaning over. We need to address that as soon as we can. We're looking at the, uh, plan and design of Smith Lane, uh, for the next bridge replacement. Sauerkraut Lo- Road is our big one with the overlay paving, um, and the, uh, stormwater basin repairs and maintenance. Those are ongoing. Uh, we continue to fund that at the hundred thousand dollar level in that, uh, combined stormwater, um, budget. Want to continue to work on the fleet management plan, um, make sure we're, uh, in the right direction. A big one for us too, the long-term planning for, uh, recycling equipment, uh, in the compost center area. We'll see that again in the, uh, sanitation budget, but, um, always try to be mindful now that the, the road to the compost center will be established, uh, what we do with that site now, um, and how we, uh, look to long-term build it out. And that curve safety analysis, complete that signage for the, for the final time. Uh, some of the, some of the highlights I would call the board's attention to. Various funds in there, that O one, four, two, six, that is the recycling collection and disposal. Uh, we always considered that, even though it was standalone, I considered that part of. We always considered that, even though it was standalone, I considered that part of, part of streets as Stan and Dennis deal with the contract of that. That's been removed and zeroed out, you'll see, and that's in the solid waste fund. The solid waste was the billings for that trash as well as the curbside collection of yard waste. That has also been moved to that sanitation fund. We've reduced road salaries. And there is a component in there, what we see with work orders plus time spent on various yard waste efforts, including, you know, hauling materials, doing grinding, all of those things. Account for about two thousand hours. Personnel hours to supplement that. So we'll augment two, two thousand hours worth of salary in the solid waste budget. And that's why the road general fund's been reduced. We haven't gotten rid of people or positions. We're just making sure they're in the right component. Also, the public work admin assistant. That's shared departments. You'll see that four fund is the solid waste. And the other is the general fund. So we have a, a full-time administrative assistant. Probably half of her calls deal with garbage slash recycling slash yard waste slash lease leaf collection. So we think it's appropriate that she's in there for handling all of those things. We reduced operating supplies from two hundred thousand to a hundred and twenty. We reduced the engineering line item for the bridges side. It's better for finance. They like to book those design costs into the capital budget as then that's the overall accounting of the improvement project. So we lowered that, that item and in the capital budget, that redesign will go there. As we said, the line striping, we took that from liquid fuels and it's back into the general fund. So a hundred and twenty thousand. That includes line striping plus pavement markings. Public Works is handling that, that contract next year to make sure that that's completed appropriately. And the crack ceiling is also moved from liquid fun, fuels, and we put that in here, forty thousand should get us quantities that we need to have. So there is kind of just a snapshot of the expenditures by that street department division, roads general, that includes salaries. Maintenance, you'll see that's each category in your budget, PW admin and then winter maintenance. So it's the breakdown on that. Some of the long-term considerations not in the budget. I, I've always am requested and asked for additional staffing for MS four repairs and maintenance, two staffing positions. It's not funded in the budget at this point. Public Works Equipment, we did receive a very robust five-year plan for equipment and for equipment replacement. Included wheel loader, pickup truck, bucket truck and trailer. We didn't include that in the capital budget or the general fund. I know that the board wanted to have continued discussions on that capital budget, specifically equipment and things of that nature. I want to let you know that those were the asks. So you can think about that when we reconvene the next time. Evaluate the need for the public works facility. We are working with our facility engineers, Dewey, they're looking at this building as well as a long-term facility review of the public works annex, just to see where we are. I think that that's, you know, five to, five to 10 years, we'll have to make some decisions. On funding for that road paving program, as we talked about, that one point four million. Need about four hundred thousand to get us where we should be or else we will get behind on, on paving. So always my recommendation to keep moving forward with street paving. Everybody wants to have a, a road in front of their house that's, you know, looks the way it should. I think that increases property values and is beneficial for the community. So. Just always like to highlight the shared categories between Stan and Dennis. You got the traffic control devices, that's the signal maintenance, that's the that's the modems and the smart system, the electricity, all the things that make that side of it go, the annual maintenance for those lights to be inspected. And then stormwater and drains, that's our, that's our big one. We funded that several years ago. That's for public works to make improvements with a hundred thousand. Anything they need to do for repairs and maintenance. There's also a component in there for grass cutting. So Stan coordinates the grass cutting contractor to make sure those basins are maintained. And then there's some engineering dollars in there as well for anything we need for design or consultation, or if people have stormwater concerns or problems, that's the line item we, we address them. So Zach also gets engaged on that side to help direct that, that component. So always important to know that that's shared over various things. Any questions on roads at this point?
Yeah, I have a question backing up. Solid, on the solid waste. I, I see you wrote that we were, the board should consider raising the rates. But, but your recommendation is to wait till the last quarter.
It, which I, I totally support that. I would, I would rather wait to see what's coming at us than, than to raise the rates now where we don't even know what's really going to hit us.
So that's one thing. And you mentioned rents, you were referring to the fields for renting.
Actually rentals include all of our rental space like the state representative's office, the farmhouse, the bungalow, Camp Olympic, the house at Cratsor Farm. Those are rents we receive from, you know, various rental properties.
And from memory, I remember those, did those rates change the last two, three, four years?
They've been frozen. They do, they do bump up. Stan, was it fifty dollars that they go up a year? On the rentals for farmhouse, bungalow.
It's basically, it's around fifty to a hundred dollars a year. Our rental management company basically proposes a, an increase of the year based on the economy. So they'll say we, we propose that this is the increase for this year for this property. And you accept, you know, do you agree with this? And then they go ahead and renew the contract and we keep up with market value for their rental rates.
Because I know it's a hot topic right now for everybody that's renting. Rents are going way up and they could be up to two, three thousand a month. And then they don't pay, I know we snow remove for Cratsor and for the Camp Olympic. We plowed our roads, though. There's not a citizen in this township that gets their roads plowed. So maybe I just want to keep it fair with what the rest of the citizens are paying. It's way out of line we got, we should have just.
They, they annually, the.
What is the rate for, say, the farm? Is it still twelve hundred or?
No, it's higher than that.
Few hundred, I wouldn't, I'm, it's a resident, I want to really say what, disclose that on.
Well, it's in the, it's in the budget. We can talk about it now.
It might be sixteen, seventeen, hundred. They, it's gone up hundreds of dollars.
All right, Lynn, I, I misread. I thought it was a lot less.
We'll pull the numbers and make sure we confirm.
I, I misread.
Yeah, they, they, they annually recommend increases based on the market.
Now, we'll make sure the board has that, the, the accurate.
It's in the book. We just don't want to dig for it now, but I.
Well, I want to make sure it's right there too. We'll confirm if we have a, we have a number that's off, so make sure we have it.
Hundreds of dollars, several.
We want to make sure it's accurate.
And then for, for the rent, because when you rent, you don't pay property tax and all our citizens are paying, you know, their own homes, big property. School tax, not, not lower McCunge. We're fortunate that that be.
Yeah. So we, we actually reflect that in that eight thousand and four oh nine, four thirty. As we do have those taxes that we're, we're responsible for. So we'll confirm the numbers to make sure we have the.
And then, Lynn, I was surprised to hear, you know, the permits are dropping, you say, the, the building permits.
It's a, it's a difficult market right now.
And I mean, the, I know because your office was scrambling to keep up with the permit workload, but maybe you can unscramble it a little.
Yeah, there.
Maybe there's other departments that could use help if the load drops. I know permits was a big topic less than six months ago.
Yeah. And interestingly enough, I think you'll see when we look at that and review their department. We've seen an increase in alterations and additions for residential. Our new construction, right, is kind of, I don't want to say slowed, we're, we're at like thirty new home permits for the year. And we're starting to see now, we're starting to see an uptick with Hamilton Walk. So they've been in buying like ten or fifteen permits at a time, which we didn't have at that component, but there's only a hundred dwelling units out there. So we are, we're trying to be mindful of that balance where we're getting hit all at once in, in Hamilton Walk. But we don't see a lot of new construction besides that Stonehill's built out. Markstown is supposed to be at some point being sold. So we've been waiting on that and that hasn't happened. But, but you're right. And I think as we see more people kind of bunker down and, and stay at their houses, we're going to continue to see an uptick on those addition renovation type permits, which picked up.
But now we're seeing a reduction. And I don't know what to say. Lynn, lastly, I, I know public works, we questioned that equipment, but you didn't put it in the budget.
That's correct. I put it in my, I had, I had provided the board a, a five-year commissioner, Robert did ask for kind of a five-year spending plan. I included that after my budget message. Those were accurate requests that we received, both in equipment. We sat down with parks and facilities and reviewed playgrounds that needed priority work. And that's plus that street paving, that's how we came to that five-year budget page that you, you may have seen.
And with that amount of vehicles, I'd be curious to the mileage of the pickup trucks, what they're at now. And then that's for further discussion, you had said that.
Yeah.
But in, in the compliment to our crew, our vehicles look really good. And they, they take good care of our dumps. I seen one go down Crocs North and I thought it was a Mack showroom coming back. It looks so good. I mean, our, our, all our vehicles look beautiful.
Yeah.
Double-edged sword, they should should last a long time.
Yeah. And I, I think that's always a, a good component too, as you look at fleet planning, right? And I'm sure a lot of people do this with their own, their own personal fleet at that, what's that balancing point where especially with the way, well, right now we're seeing the cost of vehicles and how that's ballooning, you know, from one of our pickup trucks being, you know, forty thousand at one point with a plow and spreader. Now it's eighty, eighty-five thousand in the last three years. At what point do you get? And we're seeing residual value for in the used market in those, those components where you continue to turn them over at a set timeframe, maybe earlier than what you should, but you have lower mileage and you're getting that value where it used to be on that forty thousand dollar truck. You rolled that over in 10 years, had low mileage on it, you might get ten to fifteen thousand. So you, you ran it for 10 years on basically thirty grand. Unfortunately, and I, I won't let them get rid of it here, but the green explorer that's basically rusting away that only has like eighty-four thousand miles on it. At this point is not worth anything, but sometimes I wonder if we would have gotten rid of that at, you know, fifty thousand miles, got something. But, but you're right, it's what's that balancing component, especially with heavy equipment, you know, we're seeing on, on the wheel loader that we got rid of this year. It's like thirty-five thousand that we got on that wheel loader. It's probably a hundred and fifty thousand new at that point, 20 years ago, a hundred, a hundred and thirty thousand new. So, yeah, and, and I know a lot of, a lot of fleet planning too, especially with these EV-type hybrid vehicles, the discussion, at least in the local area. With the problems that they experienced getting rid of them before the warranties expire on them. It's better to, you know, or we might have kept an Explorer 10 years. If we're going to have a hybrid, it's anything with, with battery related or hybrid and the warranty's seven, get rid of it in six. As people are having those components. So you know, and when we look at some of our older fleet, I would say we like to keep some of the older dump trucks, like pre-emission less, all of those tier, tier three and tier four items in there as they give us mechanical nightmares at that point. So a lot of our pickups have gone over to, to the Ford gas motor as we phased those out, just as the replacement cost. So it's, it's very important to think about where we're going and how we how we execute to keep the most value we can out of those things. So.
Well, I, I just mentioned because ours stuff looks beautiful. And there's, there's cities nearby that look like rolling junkyards.
Yeah.
Ours looks, looks good. And just a comment on that, you said the EV vehicles. There's a big company, Pennsylvania company that just canceled all their orders for battery-operated CDL class trucks because of the issues with them and they just not, not there yet. And like somebody had mentioned to me, all, all the money to make these bad really weigh out that good for the environment, you know?
Well, and I think what, what's the other part of this fleet thought for ordering is what we're seeing in lead times and delays. Both of our, our pickup truck for this year is it has a VIN. We're hoping it, it's going to be delivered by the end of the year. It's supposed to be here this month and then go to the upfitters. The Explorer that we, we budgeted for this year, that hybrid that we were looking to do. It doesn't even have a build date on it yet. You know, at some point, I'm probably going to recommend to the board if we find a regular Explorer or the Escape that, that was recommended for like fifteen grand less, it might be better for us to get our hands on these things. We are, there's so many unknowns, you know, and if you're looking long-term like fire, there, some of these places are in a four-year delay, two to four years on, on fire equipment. Now we're fortunate, we got our, our jet truck that we budgeted this year is at the upfitters for the Jetter and out of the Mack plant. And then the dump truck is at the body, body upfitter. And we were able to get those two chassis, but that's always a, a difficult situation as you know, we could, we could plan on something and order it. And then, you know, it could be a whole board turnover by the time it, it arrives or you know, our, our budget technically ends at the end of the year. And how do you then reallocate or, you know, reapprove something that now you're sitting waiting on order? It's, it's difficult on the government side. So, but it's all good points on, on what we need to look at. Are we good on roads? All right. So let's talk a little bit about facilities. So facilities, we have a full-time crew chief. We budget for three full-time staff. Part-time summer staff as needed. They're responsible for all of the upkeep for all the facilities, parks, all of those things that we have, traffic signals as part of that division. Parks and facilities, right? As we said, open space, playgrounds, parks are safe. In the park staff, we have a director at Stan, projects, parks, facilities. We have a full-time crew chief in parks as well, six full-time park staff, and then we staff up with part-time workers, usually June to August. What did we accomplish in twenty twenty-three, right? We continue to work on our parks master plan for repairs and maintenance. If you haven't been to Prater Pavilion yet, they just put all-new decking down in Prater Pavilion. We'll have some pictures for the board on that. Work always on the street tree permit coordination. It stands responsibility. They did replace the main building AC unit this year. They did install, get, coordinate the installation of the water line. So we have city water at this building, about a quarter of a million dollars worth of projects. The pickleball courts to the rear of the, the building, they're working to coordinate that with a contractor. We did perform some repairs to the pool this year at the end of the season to lift the concrete pool decking. So it's not a trip hazard and it's all level. They did prep the pool for opening and then worked with EMAC on anything they needed for pool operations. Replace the roof on the public works annex building. And then they're working on the long-term planning for the roof, roof program. That engineer, the roof, there's a roof engineer that we engage. They are visiting all of the roofs and they will have a master plan for us on lifespans. Kept repairing buildings in facilities, all the necessary things, painting, fixing plumbing issues, everything you can think of. They facilitate. Uh, we're replacing the Farmington Playground in its entirety, uh, should be in the next several weeks. Worked on the community center rain garden, uh, install and management of that project. Uh, one of our big outreaches, they, uh, worked to coordinate tree plantings with the EAC, uh, with the grant-funded trees. What are we going to look to do in 2024? Uh, the list is extensive at this point. We're going to have to probably repair that elevator as much as we've been putting it off, uh, for a hundred and sixty-five thousand. Continue the traffic, uh, light upgrade projects in Hamilton Boulevard corridor. Uh, we did receive that grant funding for, uh, Cressler and Hamilton, Cressler and the bypass, the bypass and Route seventy-eight. So that project will continue. They're also finishing up the, uh, Mill Creek to, uh, mine site updates on that project. Uh, always with, uh, an optocom, which is the traffic, uh, preemption device. For the fire department at various intersections. So we'll have those two that the board just approved the, uh, TE160s for this year uh, and more next year. Looking to replace Wild Cherry Playground, uh, we had a grant in state for that. We actually just got denied. Work with recreation and it's going to be one of their big projects for next year, uh, to start the process to update our comprehensive recreation plan. It's like twelve or fifteen years old. Construct a park at, uh, Spring Ridge Crossings. That is a new facility. Uh, we've identified, uh, Danfield over there as a priority replacement. So instead of replacing right at Danfield, it's our recommendation to do something at Spring Ridge. Uh, that's also, uh, would serve the, the one off of, uh, Winding Brook that's in the floodplain that we need to take out. Do, uh, some walking trail, uh, parking lot coating, tennis and basketball court resurfacing. Uh, we did accomplish basketball court resurfacing this year, uh, and that'll continue. Update the, uh, tennis court at Wild Cherry. Uh, we think that that'll have to be kind of a mill, uh, potentially mill in spots with an overlay uh, as well as fence and resurface, basically a reconstruction, uh, that's one of, uh, one of our many. Work on an upgrade of the, uh, AC unit for thirty-five thousand over at the Public Works Annex. Looking at some sport lighting for the pickleball courts and quarry potentially. Assist the engineering with the design and permitting for Cratsor Farm for the parking lot and the fishing pier. Uh, we believe, and we'll talk about that more on the capital. Uh, when I talked to engineering, uh, they're worried about the timeframe on design and permitting. If we start right now, they believe they can have something back from DEP by like July. Just not sure if we'll be able to, to execute a contract then after that, we have that permanent hand, but we want to move forward. We've heard, heard the board's, uh, comments on it. Uh, as well as, and I will note, uh, starting to, uh, cut a path around that, uh, park like we see at Camp Olympic where we have the cross-country, uh, track. And I want to do that and get that certain spots of that accessible. Facilitate that construction of the hillside school pathway, which is, uh, part of the, uh, part of the grant funding we receive, multimodal. Some of the highlights and basically, um, the budget that you see before you, uh, is almost identical to the previous year budget. Uh, I would note in the contracted services, that four-five-oh, uh, contracted services number, uh, we do see an increase of seventy-five thousand to ninety thousand. Uh, that is for that grass cutting at, uh, open space, certain parks, uh, and all of those items as we, uh, get more open space and we have more areas, uh, that, that fee goes up. So we did add some additional areas. So how does, uh, what do we spend our money on? Once again, the pie chart, I always think it looks, uh, definitely clear picture. Uh, salaries, of course, the bulk for that, uh, all labor. But interestingly enough, uh, these are all the things that make the buildings go. So we have electricity, heating, fuel, uh, operating supplies, uh, security alarms. Repairs and maintenance, also the big one, that hundred and eighty thousand, we are, we continue to spend those dollars, uh, up every year. We have aging facilities and, uh, aging areas and they're, they're taking the hundred and eighty thousand right now. So we're, we're putting a lot of dollars into these facilities. And then there's that taxes line item for the rentals, uh, some training, rental repairs, uh, if we have to go in and fix rentals. And then on the, uh, on the park side, uh, salaries for, for parks, uh, workers over there. Uh, but that's pretty then split repairs and maintenance, uh, and fixing all those things, resurfacing the courts and trails and pathways. You know, contracted services, that grass, uh, grass cutting, tree maintenance, and we'll actually have to go out and, uh, we're going to look to potentially rebid the, uh, tree contract. It expires in February. Stan and I talked about getting that out to see if we get anybody, uh, else to respond. We are, we do have the option to do a one-year renewal, uh, one year at a time. So. Equipment repairs, uh, park replacements, forty thousand, that's basically if, uh, certain playground, uh, structures have parts that are falling off. That's the, uh, park replacement, not an entire, uh, park. So. Any questions on parks and facilities?
I just, uh, I did find where I read that and it could be wrong in this, um, page one, rents and royalties. And that, that's where I got that. Again, maybe it was just.
No, you're, you're right. It, it needs, uh, it needs corrected.
That's, I believe that's just income that we get from the rental company. But in that, there's also their rental management fee. Any repairs and maintenance that, small repairs and maintenance that they handle to the properties is also basically tagged on those accounts. As, you know, as, that's what the income, before the income, we receive the income, the repairs are removed from that as part of their management. So that might not reflect what they pay, that's just what we receive after repairs and the management fees.
What we receive.
Yes.
That's what I had.
Yeah, but it's not, it's, they, they do pay much more than that. It's just the fees are taken out of that before we see that income.
Yeah, I think we should make sure the rent's in there though, too, the accurate number on that. We'll, we'll make sure we update. I think that's a good, uh, we need to see what we're, what we're charging in there. Good for the public. Anything else? Good? Good? Any other questions? All right. So it's, uh, seven seventeen, we can continue to go through recreation. There's a few slides in recreation, it's pretty cut and dried. Uh, we could stop here for the night. It's up to you gentlemen. Want to go for a little bit? All right. Good.
Do we know if the full board will be here for that next?
They're supposed to be. We were supposed to have everybody but Commissioner Higgins this evening, so. And we're supposed to have the full board for the next, for the third meeting too.
I just don't know if it'd be more efficient that we had everybody or just getting questions. What do you think?
Yeah, I mean.
You gave me an option.
Ah, I think it's good. I didn't want to get too, I didn't want to get too in that the people might have to come back, but I want to give enough that we have that foundation.
Well, I, I would say you call it, Chris. You call it.
I'm finding the way, we're here. So if you want to continue that. All right, let's, let's talk about recreation for a little bit, then we can wrap it up and we won't get too, too down into it, but, uh, all right. So, uh, recreation, of course, uh, everything with the community center pool, uh, programming, things of that nature. Uh, we have the director of recreation. Uh, we actually just brought on an assistant director of recreation. We have two full-time administrative assistants slash programming, uh, people at the community center. Part-time, uh, attendance, administrative four, uh, in attendance, we have five at this point, but, uh, we, we can go up to six. Pull admissions and session staff, we have several thirty-five camp counselors when that happens in the summertime. What did we talk about here? Uh, what did we accomplish? So community day events, uh, we saw three thousand eighty-five people come through. Uh, successfully had the summer playground program, registered two hundred and forty-seven up from two oh five in twenty twenty-two. So it's good, we're seeing that number rebound a little bit. Uh, planning for the thirteenth annual craft show in November. Uh, we successfully completed another pool season with that coordination of, uh, EMAC. Working on the, uh, expanded world of pickleball, uh, we lined two additional courts on the, the, uh, community center old gym. Working on the courts to the rear as well as trying to figure out what we can do with, uh, teams, tournaments and leagues. Continue that expansion of programming, uh, and hopefully if the residents haven't, haven't, uh, engaged in one of our programs, there's all kind of variety of things. We got cooking classes, karate, golf, uh, T-ball, all the good stuff there, kinder music, uh, Lego camp. You name it, it's basically happening there. Uh, we're planning for the second annual tree lighting event. That's our, uh, other big event for the year, right here on this township complex. Township Christmas tree was just delivered, uh, the other day. We're up and running. Uh, we thought it'd be good to bring it back to this, uh, this area, but that is taking up a lot of staff time now, planning that component. Uh, we did successfully onboard the new assistant rec director, uh, she just came onboard around, uh, September, August. So she's, uh, working with us to move things forward. Then of course, we do a lot of community outreach. Uh, we always think it's important that the, uh, the public and the board are aware. We partner with St. Luke's, they have some, three senior citizen classes at the building. Uh, we do give that free field and gym use to, uh, Lower McCandia Youth Association. We gave some, uh, free time, of course, to East Penn School District, including the Church Lane Ball Field that they asked to, uh, play high school ball on, as well as, uh, providing Camp Olympic for the cross-country meet that they just had. This is our first year, we had a food drive, uh, for the community and we partnered, uh, with EMAIS Rotary. We were a drop-off point for food collection. Uh, we also do a Habitat for Humanity stuff a truck that happens. Uh, and then always with our, our go-tos, our, uh, annual pajama program, cell phones for soldiers, uh, and our eighteenth annual troop support. So thank all the residents for that and as well as staff. Uh, what are we going to look at in, in twenty twenty-four? Uh, we want to continue that expanded programming and special events. Uh, we're looking at partnerships, uh, with local businesses, uh, we almost have that, uh, planned on for sponsorships. Continue to look at youth, uh, tennis and golf, expanding those programs. As I said, the pickleball league and court programming. Uh, and then look at and figure out, uh, what our request for proposal are going to be for a new comprehensive rec plan. Uh, would like to lay that groundwork that we're, we're circulating that RFP, uh, mid twenty twenty-four so we can pick a, uh, consultant by the end of twenty-four hopefully, and then budget for twenty-five, uh, and try to get some grant money, uh, in the year as well for that. Source of revenue and recreation, um, basically charges for service, right? So swimming pool, uh, that's our membership, daily passes, uh, swim lessons, snack bar. Hundred and eighteen thousand, we're down from our hundred and thirty-four thousand number. Well, we anticipate, uh, a hundred and eighteen. Our number's one thirty-four that we collected, uh, previously. So, uh, we see a drop-off in, in daily pool admissions. Uh, it's concerning still at this point. We'll see some swim slides a little later. Playground program fees, those, uh, two hundred, was it forty-seven, uh, enrollees, that fifty thousand for there. Uh, rental facilities, that's community center, gymnasiums, uh, rental rooms, about a hundred and thirty thousand. I would note to the board, and you'll notice in your line item, the Westco'sville Recreation Center, uh, that is funded at, or receipts of zero this year as our plan to, uh, not have that be a rental, uh, but I put it in here just to note that there is a line item. Uh, we receive reimbursements from the library for utilities, sixteen thousand. Uh, and then programming component, what we charge for people to, to attend programs, uh, seventy-five thousand. Uh, garden plots are very minimal, about eighteen hundred, those are on the, uh, bogey lane lots. And then field use fees, they're up, uh, around ten thousand this year. It's been a good year for, for that. Recreation's been really driving, uh, field use and rentals, uh, fairly hard. So they've had some outside, uh, sources, whatever rent. And there, uh, is the pie chart on, on where that is. And interestingly enough, you know, swimming pool, rental facility, uh, programming, of course, are our big three. Uh, and there they are on the pie chart. So. Our budget expenditures are up, uh, about twenty thousand from, from this year, twenty twenty-three year. What do we, what do we spend money on? Uh, community center staffing and operating supplies, utilities to run the building. Uh, repairs and maintenance to fix that facility, uh, and the swimming pool. Swimming pool's in there and summer programming, that includes the concerts, uh, and that side of it. As we said, we had that increase from, uh, a million twenty-four. And where are they for the board to recognize, uh, full and part-time staffing, we're up about seventy-five hundred dollars. We're trending and we'll continue to watch, uh, with the assistant recreation director now, uh, how that impacts, impacts part-time staffing. So. We feel pretty comfortable with, with where we're headed there. Uh, increasing the, uh, repairs and maintenance, ten thousand for the building, uh, and recreational type components. Increasing the pool contracted service, uh, basically as the state chooses to pass an increased minimum wage. Uh, that definitely trickles down to municipality and our end users. Uh, so we believe that that contract with them, the numbers we've been receiving are ten thousand additional dollars. Uh, that's what the pie chart looks like, uh, bulk of salaries of the community center, that repairs and maintenance. Uh, utilities to keep everything going up there, uh, and the instructors for programs, they're under contracts for us. Uh, and, uh, that's a big component. Couple of things on the pool. So what we saw, uh, for twenty twenty-three, we saw, uh, an increase in, uh, participants, uh, for the swim lessons from twenty twenty-two, and we noticed a little bit, uh, more in fees received. Uh, however, those fees are passed through and go to EMAC as part of our, uh, contracted agreement. Uh, we would recommend no changes for that relationship, uh, as it seems to be working, uh, well-received. Uh, pool revenue, we saw a decline in our, uh, admissions, as I said, uh, from a hundred and thirteen thousand to a hundred. We continue, we're down on, uh, we were down on daily passes. Memberships were fairly close to what we did before, uh, but we saw a big drop-off in, in dailies. Uh, snack bar, uh, income decreased by thirty-seven hundred dollars. Uh, we did see an increase in, in lap swimming and we'll see, uh, in the next slide. Uh, pools saw, uh, thirteen thousand patrons, uh, which was down about seventy-seven hundred, uh, from twenty twenty-two. Uh, the adult lap swim, uh, ninety-eight participants, so we saw an increase of sixteen, that program seems to be well-received. Uh, scuba cast was discontinued as the vendor, uh, retired, went out of business, so we couldn't offer that. Uh, we're looking for, uh, new opportunities, uh, for pool in the pool next year and to keep people engaged. For twenty twenty-four, we're going to continue to recommend to the board that we, uh, execute our contract with, uh, EMAC, Mays Aquatics to manage that and provide lifeguards. Uh, we performed the following repairs, uh, we did lift that concrete deck around the pool. Uh, next year we budgeted to, uh, replace the coving, the coving is now, uh, shifting and, and moving in towards the pool, it needs to be replaced. We think this will have to be a, a big job. We'll need to get that out either prior to the pool season, so we kind of have to get, get moving on that one. Uh, we will evaluate that operation on our, on our efficiency and how we can kind of, uh, reimagine the pool. And seek sponsorships for the, for the facility. So the pool had an operating loss of, uh, seventy-two thousand dollars. This is more than the twenty twenty-two loss of, uh, sixty-one thousand. However, you'll see, uh, I didn't update my one number. But you, we had a loss in, uh, I have to look at them, twenty-one was sixty-one, twenty-two was fifty-six, so I have to change my numbers. So we're, we've had, uh, we're definitely up on where that was in previous years, something for us to be mindful of. Uh, if, if pool patrons continue to, to drop off, uh, we'll have to, have to really explore what we're doing there. Uh, there is the expenditures, that big bulk, a hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred, uh, is the contracted service, that number actually goes to one forty next year. But then snack bar salaries, uh, maintenance and then minor equipment, general expense. The summer programming, uh, as we said, that staff with thirty-five, uh, staff camp coordinators, tenants was two forty-seven. Uh, we did have summer concerts, uh, we had ten at the Hills of Lockridge, uh, up from seven the previous year. So, um, with that, that actually has its own kind of, uh, line item in the book, so those two are together. Uh, you'll see that. You'll see that part. It's like a general entertainment. That's the third line of that line item. And that's where the concerts are included with the playground components. And there it is, playground supplies, general expense. That's entertainment services are the concerts, salaries for the camp counselors. And that's that little group of recreation. So there's our summary, you know, kind of think these projections might be a little low, but I think we'll end the year. You know, with revenue about 457,000, expenditures around 730,000. We need to keep conservatively forecasting where we are. Continue to expand programming, continuing to bring new things online. And be proactive in how we're managing our staffing and our budget. So I think it's important to note that, that component. All right. Any questions on recreation? That's an hour and a half. Any questions about any components that we've looked at? Liquid fuels, debt service? Anything on that? Anything that the board might have questions or want to see in our next two presentations that I can highlight? Look to address better or more clearly. We do, we will talk sewer fund, we'll talk sanitation. We'll talk capital budget are our big three. We have to finish community and economic development, which you'll see will be through that fairly quickly. And then those three big, three big topics. Do you want to see, I was going to handle basically LMYA when their request. We'll handle that. I can handle fire and EMS as well, unless you want to see a full-blown presentation by them. And if you want to see any additional staff here, let me know.
I don't have any issue. I don't know how the rest of the board feels with you handling. We know, we know. You know, the song and dance we get with, you know, those requesting monies. So it's nothing new. And I don't mean that in a bad way. It's just, we know the process and I'm fine with it personally. If you want to just take that on and do it as you normally would.
Okay.
I know we covered the sewer fund tonight. It's just the only night we're gonna discuss that.
We'll talk about sewer actually and sanitation probably one day. We'll have that in detail. If you, if you have questions, I'm more than, if you want to get me preloaded with questions, so I have the right information for you, that's always helpful as well. So.
I was going to ask if we wouldn't do the suggested 5% increase, would we crash the fund? For 2024 or would it survive?
You, you would not crash the fund. I'll make sure that we have some, I'll make sure we have some numbers there. You'd be, you'd probably would need to cut, I'll look at the capital construction, which is the INI components, would probably have to cut that about 500,000. We budgeted 1.4, 1.45.
What's in there, the 5% was a smoothed out number from the PFM study, like.
Right.
And, and we are getting hit now with capital charges from LCA. So what's presented now is in balance. But again, as Bruce says with the full INI program for us, we also are in our, in our transport fee, treatment and transport fee from LCA. For years, they threatened capital charges. Now we're getting.
Right. And I know the INI is a big cost.
And. I mean, you could use fund balance, but the trend is not with us there.
Well, the our trend here, Lower McConge, we, we invest a lot in iron.
Yeah, no, I meant, I meant the LCA.
Right. But more than, but that's from the same fund for that.
Yeah, the INI is from, and I mean, oh, yeah.
I forget who said it the other night, but I think whether we invest a ton of money or a little much, we're all going to get get hit really hard in the future, in the near future. Whether you invested a lot or I forget who said it, it would be just not true, but it's, it's a possibility.
But the other, the other thing too though, is it's our infrastructure. So if we don't maintain that, if we don't take care of it, that will lead to more of an issue, I think, going forward if we have, you know. You know, I understand that the LCA part of it, but it's also an issue. It's township issue if we don't keep up.
Well, we did sit up on it.
Oh, I know.
You and I been around then. That last presentation from our engineers showed proof that we're, they can keep some balance. If I remember correctly.
We, we continue to make progress. We are engaged as what they call, you know, SCARP source, source reduction plan that we have to submit to the DEP as well as all the other entities in the, the LCA collection district. So there are certain thresholds we need to make sure that we're, we're accomplishing. But yes, we, we've seen you know, definitely positivity out of the work that the townships perform, part of the last presentation.
I do, like, do look at that. What's his name?
So, yeah.
Presentation we got the last time from him, I'll say it again. It was the best it was ever explained to me. Don't, don't show assumptions. It shows a lot of facts in there, what we accomplished through, through your department. That's also. We made a lot of progress. We made a lot of progress, Brian. And we do a lot of work. It is a long road and maybe because I've been around a while and listened to you for 20 years. The game changed. It changed several times. Or shouldn't call it a game, but the plan. Went from giant tanks being staged throughout the township now to a new line going down to the treatment plant to an expansion of the treatment. Many changes. Well, many more changes coming.
Yeah. And I, I would note.
The point I'm making, sorry to interrupt you. We're, we're all going to get here. Conge, Upper McConge, Lower McConge, South Whitehall. It will only be us in the time.
Yeah. And I would note, we're looking to have the Lehigh County Authority in to talk about this long-term project. I don't believe the November workshop is going to work for them, but we want to get them in here as soon as we can. As it's going to be a busy 2024 to meet the obligations of the 2025 537 plan. So we're, we're working on a strategy to, to bring back information to all boards in the valley and have them here to present. So that's coming sooner than later.
Thank you.
Anything else we can have ready? All right. We okay with the format? We'll, I said, we'll have sewers, we'll have capital, we'll have sanitation.
Solid ways.
Yeah, solid waste. Sorry. Jeff told me sanitation one time. Now I have to say, now I can't say solid waste. I, I would say if the board could continue to think about with that solid waste fund, we know the, the rates and it's good to hear the feedback that we're, would be better to wait before we adjust bills and trash bills. We also need to think about that yard waste component, permitting for that and how, how you gentlemen feel about where we are with the, you know, $50 price point for, for that component. We know, we know it's going to be controversial. We know the residents have an expectation of, of service there and having their permits. You know, doing and bringing whatever they want at this point, which is what they're doing. It's going to be a change for us. And would appreciate thoughts back on, on how we approach that. So that's what we're going to be asking, I guess, for kind of your policy guidance when we have that, that discussion.
You're referring across the street.
Correct.
Is that going to be moved next year?
Not next year. Whenever we get some funding at that point, there might be some grant opportunities available for, for that relocation. But at this point, I think we have to just get our hands around the costs of what yard waste is. What the expectations are for residential use. And how we, how we work on the permitting and make sure that residents and current residents are the only ones using that in there. So. Which we believe is going to be a difficult discussion.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Definitely. Anything else? We good?
We're good.
Staff, miss anything? Mess anything up? You good?
Not too bad.
All right. Bailey? Dennis? All right. Good?
7:40. We'll call it adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Yes. Yes.